You're in high demand, you know Jeff.
Jeff is with us today, I'll stop for him.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Moving on, blessing and land acknowledgement, councillor Moncrief. Get all step.
As we gather here, we recognise that we're on tree three lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships we have with them and we give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making today.
Moving on the agenda, public information notices, there's none. Item D, declaration of community interests and the general nature thereof. If there's any member of council that had any declaration of community interest in the general nature thereof pertaining to any items as follows on today's agenda from a meeting in which a member was not in attendance, seen none. Moving on, item number one, council orientation session.
Okay, so item number eight, development services including planning. Mr Port.
Am I on?
You're up.
Okay. We have a number of presentations today. It's about the Development Services Department and who we are and what we do. I'm going to start with kind of the overarching land use planning slide deck which encompasses a great deal of what the Development Services Department is all about. And just talk a little bit about how land use planning works in Ontario. So I've got a few slides here that we can go through and we'll go from the broadest overview approach down to how is it really done in the city of Canora. So this first slide shows in descending order the detail with which we undertake land use planning in the city of Canora. And of course, land use planning is important because not only does it regulate land use, it's also interwoven with economic development, public works and engineering. It's quite an interdisciplinary field. But I think, so to get started, we start with the Planning Act, which is the piece of legislation in Ontario which governs land use planning. And it has a number of different provisions in it that deals with land division, subdivisions and condominiums, a zoning bylaw which regulates land use, things like community improvement plans are permitted through the Planning Act, minor variances and all the different aspects of land use planning that we get to implement with the, you know, through the city of Canora. The next most important document, so that's where we get the legal authority. In fact, typically, any zoning bylaw amendment or official plan amendment or anything like that, if you read it at the top, we always put where we get the legislative authority to be able to do what we do. And it will quote the appropriate section of the Planning Act. In planning, we don't make stuff up. We actually have to trace it back to where is our legal authority to actually do something under the Planning Act. So that's where it all flows from and that's why that sits at the top. The next most important piece of planning, land use planning policy in Ontario is a thing called the provincial policy statement or the PPS. And the latest iteration or version is called the PPS 2020. And it implements the Planning Act. But what it does is the province of Ontario, and again, we are creatures of the province of Ontario as municipalities, the province of Ontario through a wide range of various policy areas in terms of growth and development says, whatever you do at the local level, you have to conform to our provincial policy, be it growth and development in urban areas, in rural areas, the protection of natural resources, hazard lands, mineral resources, aggregate resources, all of these other aspects of land use planning have to be in conformity with the provincial planning statement or PPS 2020 because the province has said, this is how we want to see land use planning occur in the province of Ontario. You can't play out of bounds outside this provincial policy statement. Now, having said that, the PPS 2020 is quite broad and quite sweeping in its scope. I would argue also that to a large degree, it's, and this won't surprise anyone, geared towards southern Ontario types of land use planning issues. So it's not very, and I'll get to that in the next slide a little bit. It's not very kind of northern centric. So often when I'm dealing with the PPS, I often have to hunt around for policies to make sure that we're in conformity with the PPS because many of the PPS policies, you really have to stretch them to figure out a way to make them apply to a northern municipality. Having said that, there are different parts of the PPS which are quite specific and you better be in conformity with it because if you go off to the thing like the Ontario Land Tribunal and you're not in conformity with the PPS, you will be held accountable. So that's the next step kind of down the rung. The yellow one or the growth plan, or more specifically, it's called the Northern Growth Plan, is a curious thing. A number of years back, a number of us who were planners in the north, through the Ontario Provincial Planners Institute, had lobbied, and this is back when it was like PPS 2014 or even PPS 2004, the original one. We said what I'd already said, that the PPS is too broad. We need something more specific to the north that is more growth oriented because the PPS for southern Ontario is very regulatory and it's designed to manage growth. Where we said, well, the problem we have here in the north is we want to encourage growth. There's population decline, assessment decline. These policies don't apply very well to us. We would like a northern PPS. And we went to the minister of the day and through the Ontario Provincial Planners Institute and the northern district, we lobbied hard for this. And it's one of those curious things where they agreed at municipal affairs and housing. And we thought, great, we're going to have our own PPS that is going to be custom for northern municipalities. Well, what you put in at one end isn't necessarily what you get coming out of the other. So what we got coming out of the other end after the ministry had agreed to take this on is a thing called the Northern Growth Plan. And it's been around, I think, since 2011 now, 2012, something like that. And while our hope was to have a northern PPS, what we got was almost another plan stuck on the PPS called the Northern Growth Plan, which in my opinion says everything and says nothing. I don't think I've been to one OLT hearing now where anybody has pinned a planning argument on the Northern Growth Plan and says this is the way we have to do it, this way. Or you're not in conformity with the Northern Growth Plan, therefore you're not doing good planning. So the Northern Growth Plan is there. It has a bunch of very broad, sweeping policy statements about how it wants to, how the province of Ontario wants to see the north grow and develop. Primarily what it does is it tends to focus growth and development in what they call five major centres, with Canora always kind of just left out on the edges, the sixth. So it's Timmins, North Bay, Sudbury, St. Marie and Thunder Bay. And development should go to these urban centres. And then it has some other policies that are not too specific about a bunch of other stuff. So while technically it's in the mix, it doesn't have a big impact on what we do. In fact, I think it's probably time for the province of Ontario to cope. Now that they've got the PPS 2020, I think they haven't done that for 10 or 11 years. I think they should probably go back and look at the Northern Growth Plan and perhaps go back to the original request to get it to, and design the review to get it to do what was originally intended to do, which was to become the northern version of the PPS. But that's just my two cents rate. The next item is probably the most important policy document that a planner works with in a municipality, which is the official plan. So what has to happen is, so this is our own local homegrown planning document for planning and development, in this case for the city of Canora, for the next 10 years. So it has quite a number of policies on how the community is to grow and develop. And it is really the guiding document when we have an application come in and we're assessing it for its merits. If there are ever any grey areas or areas that we need guidance on, on how to make a recommendation from council, the first thing we do is we go to the official plan and have a look and say, well, what does our policy say on this? And again, it's a policy document, it is not a bylaw. It is to give guidance to both staff and the council in decision making on land use. If something isn't exactly in keeping with the official plan, it's not the end of the world because it's not a bylaw, it's a policy. So there's often room for interpretation in how that policy is applied. But it is kind of the go-to document for land use, for present and future land use at the, for us at the city of Canora. I have a slide deck as well coming up that, and I think all of you are aware, we're in the process of reviewing the official plan right now. And I'll say it now and I'll say it again later. We've got a draft document they're working with. And since I started it, of course, you know, it's prepared by an outside consulting firm. And we're key to make sure that when it does come to the, to council for approval, that it is really a kind of a made in Canora land use planning document. And that's what we'll be working on over the next couple of months. So that we'll make sure the policies there are really, I hope, customised to Canora's wants and needs over the next, over the next 10 years. And then we cross the line from policy down to bylaws. And of course, zoning bylaw is more of a black and white type document. There are areas for interpretation within it. But the zoning bylaw does two things mainly. It regulates the use of a particular property and how it can be used. And it regulates where structures can be located and how big they can be on any particular property. So it regulates use and it regulates structures on each piece of property. And it's broken down into zones. So in a residential area, you would have an R1, R2 or R3 residential area. So what are their permitted uses there? They're residential. In the downtown general commercial area, that's where commercial use is encouraged. It's a wide range of commercial uses are permitted. And the types of buildings and structures are very different. If you look at the buildings in the downtown area, they're chock a block right next to one another, which is a very different type of building fabric than you would have north of the bypass where it would be rural or rural residential. So each zone is quite different and quite unique and it tries to reflect the land use patterns in that particular area and regulate the land use patterns in that particular area so there's compatible land use. So that's how the zoning works. And if someone wants to do something on their property that is not permitted either as a use or a structure, then they can come, they, under the Planning Act, under section 34, they can make an application to the municipality to amend the zoning bylaw for that to occur. And if it's, if it's, some are very simple and straightforward. If they're not simple and straightforward, I go back to the official plan. And I say, okay, what's our policy here? That's where I get my policy guidance. If someone wants to amend the zoning bylaw, what does, what does our official plan document say? So that's kind of the bird's eye view of the hierarchy of planning. This is kind of restates it, what I just said. Planning framework, the province sets the ground rules with the Planning Act, growth plan for northern Ontario, I've already touched on.
Oh, sorry Jeff.
No, that's fine. I've covered this already anyway. And I think I've, yeah, covered this too. PPS, I was way ahead of myself.
You really were.
See, I didn't even need the slides.
I didn't know.
Almost as if you'd done this.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, let's stop there. Official plan, yeah, let's talk a little bit about the official plan. So here are just some key things that are in any official plan that I think, and these are key for the city of Canora. One is sustainable development. Of course, we do have a sustainability committee. I think we'll be talking about that next week. Natural environment, certainly with Canora. And the lifestyle in Canora, a lot of it is surrounding and focused on the natural environment. So there are values that need to be protected because, and again, these are shared values of why people live here. Affordable housing. Need I say anything about affordable housing? I think it's so, I don't think it needs to be restated that it's one of the main priorities, if not the main priority over the next few years for the city of Canora. Diversified economy, of course, you know, we're in the post paper mill world now and not just the city of Canora, but many, many northern municipalities are working hard to diversify their economy. That way, if you have a diversified economy and something happens in one sector of the economy and things don't go so well, you've got a balanced kind of economic fabric in your community and you don't have to take the big hit. So the more diversified your economy can be, the better it is through the ups and downs of the economic cycle. And of course, that almost goes without saying, tourist destination. More and more, as time goes by, certainly in the post-mill world, Canora's always been a tourist destination. But even as a tourist destination, that has changed over the years. It's not the same as it was in the 50s and 60s. It's a different type of tourist market now in the 21st century type of economy in the city of Canora than it was in the 20th century. And, you know, we need to adapt and change to make sure that we're still attractive to those new and emerging markets when it comes to tourism. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that over the years. It's not just the hunting fish camp tourism economy that drives, not just the city of Canora, but the Lake of the Woods region anymore. We know what our markets are, we know our markets are kind of mid-western US and western Canada. And, you know, we've tracked that over the years. So I think we have a pretty good idea what it takes to become a good tourist, to become a tourist destination. You don't throw out the baby with the bathwater, of course. We have some of our traditional tourism economies that are still strong and that's good. But also their support for new and different types of tourism experiences as well, that I'm sure you're all familiar with, like the family vacations and, again, markets from the west. And the cottage industry is huge with the city of Canora. I think that also goes without saying. I don't know if you put it under a tourist destination, but certainly the impact that summer residents have on the local economy is, to say it's significant is an understatement. It's a very important part of the economy of the city of Canora and the Lake of the Woods region as a whole. Complete communities, again, this is more official plan stuff, complete communities. Again, this is just a, are you going to catch me?
Go ahead.
Just a wide mix of uses within the community. Neighborhood design will promote desirable built form in any development and redevelopment. That's a hard one to do, you know, when you're trying to attract investment in your community. Again, when you're in southern Ontario, some of these things are easy to do because you have so much competition from developers to come into your community. You can say, no, you've got to do it, here are our rules, you have to do it this way. And if you don't do it this way, there's another development in back of it, developer in back of him or her, and another one. So till we get the one that we want to get this right, we're going to say no to you and go to the next one. Well, it doesn't work that way in the north, right? You know, we don't have developers all lined up coming in. So we have to take a slightly different approach to things. We have to be a little more flexible in some of these things that you can't. Just because you can do something in the Planning Act doesn't mean you have to do it. And we try to be flexible when developers come in. We have some minimum standards that absolutely have to be met. We have, work with engineering and infrastructure. There are some things you have to do that you can't get around. But we're more, we don't have rigid neighbourhood design parameters that you have to meet. We have to be a little more flexible there and let the private sector make some decisions that are right for them. We'd rather see, you know, a project go ahead than be perfect. And that's really a simple way to look at it. Not everything has to be perfect. But it is important that it goes ahead to the building perfect stage. Multimodal transportation system is probably a more of a southern Ontario type of thing that got stuck, that is in the official plan because it's in all the templates for official plans that the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing likes to see. And nine is important, of course, we've had a lot of talk about this, community and Aboriginal engagement. If we think back to the land acknowledgement that opens every meeting, I think that's now something that is, something that we're, we think, it's, it's almost a way of thinking and a way of doing business now that no matter what we do, you know, we always have, community engagement is important. Sometimes with community engagement, you hear things, you hear inconvenient truths and things that you don't want to hear, but it's important to listen and it's important to engage as opposed to not. It takes a little longer sometimes when you use a community engagement process, be it for, to get a project done or to work on an issue and resolve an issue. But certainly in my experience as a planner over 30 years, it's more important to spend a little bit of time on that front end with engagement and dialogue and conversation than to sometimes rush ahead and make a decision, try to do a quick fix. So that's reflected in the official plan along with Aboriginal engagement. Official plan land use designations. There are two parts to the official plan and there's actually two parts to the zoning bylaw as well. One part is the text and the other part are the maps. So we have 10 policies area, 10 policy areas in the official plan where we have land use policies for the future growth and development of the area. And they would be land use designations in the official plan. We also have things that are called special policy area overlays. And they would be things like natural resource values, fisheries values, wildlife values, archaeological resources, mineral and aggregate resources. And each of those have their own set of policies as well. So we have the text, which is the policy, we have the maps. And for each of the map designation areas, there's a written policy that goes along with it. Zoning bylaw was adopted in 2015 following the official plan. The reason is it has to come after, it can't go before because as I said, when we have the official plan, the zoning bylaw by definition has to be in conformity with the policies of the official plan. So first you do your official plan. And for us now, as I said, you know, the official plan for the city of Canora is still with the ministry for review to get all the interministerial comments. We do have a first cut of a comprehensive zoning bylaw, which we kind of have just sitting on the shelf right now, waiting to get the official plan done. Once the official plan is done, then we'll finish up the zoning bylaw as well. The zoning bylaw again is much more of a black and white bylaw type of document. And as I mentioned, it addresses what land uses are permitted and where the buildings and structures can be located and how they can be used. We have more zones in the zoning bylaw than the official plan mainly because it's more detailed. So we will have a whole, it's not.
I think councillor.
Yep, stop me anytime.
What was in place before 2015?
The previous one probably would have been '04 for the zoning bylaw. Yeah, would probably, we wrote the first city of Canora zoning bylaw in '04.
So every five years, we have a requirement to update. So 2010, 2015, you're probably asking yourself, it's 2022.
It's actually, it's actually 10 years now. They bumped it up to 10 years now, yeah.
But this has been a protracted process, which is why we're still in it and we would have hoped to be through it. I think COVID was a big challenge. I think it's change of government in our election at least. So there's been a few factors that slowed it down, but we're.
So yeah, it was '04, 15, so now is the time.
But good news is 10 years on the next one.
Right.
So '04 was the first one that was written?
That was the first one for the city of Canora.
Went after amalgamation in 2012.
Yeah, I remember that one because our department wrote it.
And previous to that, Jeff?
Previous to that, each of the three municipalities had their own zoning bylaw. So Kiwetin had a zoning bylaw, town of Canora had a zoning bylaw and Jaffray-Malick had a zoning bylaw. And it's interesting, back then, just for a bit of history, for Canora and Kiwetin, they had to deal with things like land division. They had a Canora-Kiwetin planning board, which is kind of like our PAC or Planning Advisory Committee. So Canora and Kiwetin had a, had a planning board. And then JM, back in the day, operated separately. They had, they had their own planning advisory committee. But then with amalgamation in the year 2000, we had to figure out how to take all of these disparate pieces of planning documents and committees and merge them into the city of Canora. So that's, that's when we did the, we wrote the first official plan for the city of Canora, the first zoning bylaw. And that's when we put together the first planning advisory committee for the city of Canora, which will be another set of slides coming up.
You okay?
Yeah, thanks Jeff.
Thanks Jeff.
Oh, sorry, Nessa?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I guess we're going to do this twice here. Oh, so now, so that's sort of correct. Planning Act requires that official plan is reviewed within five years after the previous update or within 10 years of an official plan. So this is a planning nuance thing. What some municipalities do after five years, you could do what's called an internal review, where you simply do a review of your official plan and its policies and what's working, what's not, you know, what are the issues? And what you could do then is a single official plan amendment that would bring it, that would amend any of the policies to perhaps current standards. But it doesn't mean you need a new official plan. What it says is this is just kind of like an internal review. What I said to Kyle earlier is the way the system works now in regulation for the Planning Act is it's every 10 years that a municipality should do a complete review of their official plan, rescind the old official plan and adopt a new one. And that's the process we're involved in right now.
Jeff, just, sorry, quick question because it did come up with some residents in certain areas of Canora about the current one, when it was, when it went through the public consultation process, like the draft or the initial plan. What's the process once you actually have that document back in your hands?
Right.
Whenever that may be?
Well, yeah, from the interministerial review that's happening right now, yeah.
What are the steps after, because it's been like 10 years or whatever. I can't remember what happens after we receive the.
So once we get that back, that's, you know, well, two things are going to happen. We're going to get that back after the interministerial review. And then we are going to, we'll receive the comments from the ministries and we will incorporate those comments into the present draft. The second thing we're going to do within the planning team is, again, try, utilizing those comments and utilizing, you know, some of the comments we got from the first round of public consultation and our own local knowledge. I want to go through the official plan and Canora-ise it, as I said earlier, because it's still a little bit more of a template that we got from previous consultants that, for my liking. So I want to go through it with a fine tooth comb. And I want to also internally make sure that we revise these policies so that they're best reflective of what's happening in the city of Canora. So we're going to incorporate the ministry comments. I'm going to do another review of the official plan. That will then produce a final draft and that's where we'll go back out to the public. I'm gonna do another review of the official plan. That will then produce a final draft and that's where we'll go back out to the public again. And we'll put it back, we'll, we'll do another round of public consultation. Indicate what changes were made from the first round of consultation to where we are now. Typically, there's a couple of different tools we can use for consultation. There's the open, we'll, we have to do two things according to law. We have to have an open house and then we have to have the statutory public meeting, which you're all familiar with, which we have here. We'll of course do a little more than that on the final round of consultation to take it back to the public and get some feedback on what would be policies that we have in there on our final draft. So once we get it back, we incorporate the comments, we'll do our own edit to Kenoraize it. And then another round of consultation and then off to council for approval.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next steps. So that's what we're gonna do. Yeah, we could get, we'll, we'll get, oh, could you back up one? For a final review, consultation, council, okay, no, that's basically, that's it. Yeah.
We will also provide a copy of the presentation since we're, we're getting.
Minor planning tools and minor variances. Minor variance is section forty-five of the Planning Act. I talked about the zoning bylaw earlier. It's a black and white document. It's a bylaw. It's, you know, nuts and bolts. Thou shalt have a front yard setback of ten meters or a side yard setback of one point five or whatever it is. And if you're applying for a building permit and you cannot meet that setback for whatever reason. We, the chief building official cannot issue a building permit because it does not comply with all applicable laws. So you're stuck. So how do you get unstuck? You have to either move your building around or you can apply for a variance to the bylaw because the world is not made in right angles and perfect spaces, right? It's, the world is round and curved and it's got stuff in the way of where you want to build stuff. So where the bylaw is very geometric and black and white, the real world's not like that. So minor variances are a way to accommodate the real world when you're trying to get a building permit and build a piece of property that isn't just a rectangle and flat. So.
Excuse me, Joe, did you have a question, Counselor?
I do have one and I don't, I don't know if this is the correct time or anything like that, but I know that the, the province is debating the bill twenty-three and a lot, I just, I don't even know if I have a question separate. It feels like a lot of it is also, you know, aligned with what we're speaking about today. And I'm just wondering where we, if we are talking about that, if we, or anything.
Joe, would you like to, would you like to build that in? Would you like to get out it right now or is it already building?
Because we're also doing our official plan right now and it feels like it's sort of.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna tread very carefully on bill twenty-three at the moment because I haven't thoroughly researched it. I've looked at it from a high level.
It doesn't have to be right now.
I think I've told Kyle a few things that I've noticed in it. Once again, it is very, very Southern Ontario driven. A lot, and, and it will be very controversial in Southern Ontario. Because they are looking, the government of the day, the provincial government of the day is looking at some sweeping changes in how development occurs in Southern Ontario or around the green belt. And around, around the elimination of develop, I think I saw an AMO article today or yesterday. They're saying, we don't use development charges here. The way development charges work is development charges are placed on new development and new housing and it all goes into a reserve fund. Because as a community grows, they're saying, where are we gonna build the arenas? Where are we gonna put the parks? What about, what if this new neighborhood needs a library? So that's why development charges were invented, if you will, way back in the day. Now, they add a significant price tag too. Because the developer just passes along to the homeowner, right? And it could, it's, so it's a big number in Southern Ontario. When you buy a house, it could be another fifty, seventy-five hundred thousand dollars tacked on to an expensive home. But that's why development charges were there. So getting back to bill twenty-three, what the province of the day is saying is this is a disincent. We've never had them. I've always advised against them here. Andrew, we probably had this discussion before. We don't have development charges in Kenora because they are, they can be an impediment or a disin, because we're trying to attract and develop, not be a traffic cop. So, but in bill twenty-three, the province is basically stripping away development charges. Saying they're inhibiting the building of houses and housing development. And I think the AMO article saw, I saw it yesterday or the day before, said that this could reduce revenue to Southern Ontario municipalities by fifty billion dollars. And this is money they rely on to build parks and community centers and arenas and libraries. So how it's gonna play out, I don't know, but it's very Southern Ontario centric.
Even roads and pipes and stuff like that, you know, it's pretty significant. So it's a great question and fully appreciate why the tension between what we're, we're doing something and now the rules are changing a little bit. So why's the tension?
So the last point I'd make, and then I'm gonna back off bill twenty-three, but it's important to know the context of, it's very Southern Ontario. The other thing they're saying is municipalities now are required to have, have housing targets. That, you know, they're, they're, they're prodding the municipalities to kind of get proactive in the housing game. And I think the email I sent to Kyle was, we don't have, we've got very aggressive housing targets already. I've talked to council about them before. We'll talk about them again. And I mean, our housing targets, I think, would far exceed any minimum targets that would be required by the province. So I'm not concerned about that at all. But they will, will be requiring municipalities to have housing targets and we already have them, so that's fine.
So that's the quick high level, but if anything, as we get deeper in, we'll.
Yeah. So you want a building permit and you can't get a building permit because the house doesn't fit on your lot. And you've got to go see the planning department for a minor variance, which says we will reduce your front yard or side yard or increase your height or whatever. So that you can build your building. And it comes to the planning department and under section forty-five of the Planning Act. And over time in Memorial in Ontario. The precedent for, the, the way you evaluate minor variances is called the four tests. And the four tests are, is it minor? Does it meet the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? Does it meet the general intent and purpose of the official plan? And to me, this is always the most important one, the last one. Is it desirable and appropriate, is it a desirable for the appropriate use or development of the land, building and structure? In other words, does it fit in with that area? And these are the criteria by which minor variances are evaluated. Most of them are pretty simple and straightforward. Every now and then you get a sticky one or a tricky one that I've often said that sometimes minor variances, if you get a tricky one, can be as complicated as, you know, a big, high level official plan amendment. And you, you know, it's, I think with, over time and with experience, you kind of learn how to navigate the tricky ones. But again, this is for relief from the zoning bylaw so that you can get a building permit to build what you want to build. And of course, there's always the, may be appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Plans of subdivision. Section fifty-one of the Planning Act. This is for the division of land. Anything over three or four lots requires a plan of subdivision. And plans of subdivision or land division, there's two sections of the Planning Act for land division. Section fifty-one is for plans of subdivision. Section fifty-three is for consents. Consents are for onesies and twosies, just one, two, maybe three lots. And it's a little bit of a simpler process, sometimes not. But plans of subdivision would be for bigger developments. Again, anything over three, four lots, up to twenty, thirty, fifty, fifty lot subdivisions. The subdivisions may be urban on water and sewer, or they may be rural where they are service what we call private services. So that would be a well and a septic, where in the case of a waterfront subdivision, it may be a lake water or surface water source and a, and a septic field, but they're a private services. They're not municipal services. This, the city of Kenora, and it continues to this day, has delegated approval of plans of subdivision. I don't know if we have condominiums in there. I may talk about condominiums. This is condominiums as well. Same section of the Planning Act, fifty-one. So, but with a condominium, typically you're not dividing proper. Most of the time you're not dividing property, you're dividing a building. If you think of a plan of condominium, apartment building, you, you're dividing the building up into units. And there is also thing called a vacant land condominium. Where you're taking a piece of property and you're creating units and not lots. The difference with a vacant land condominium and a plan of subdivision, like I said, they all have to have their own private services. With a vacant land condominium, they could share a septic field or they can share a well, which is different than a plan of subdivision. And a plan of subdivision, if it's rural, everybody has to have their own well and septic. With a vacant land condominium. The private owner owns a private unit, but the condominium, the condominium corporation manages the communal services, the road, the septic field, the water system, be it surface water or well, well, Lisa?
Is it different than tenants in common?
How much time have you got?
No, I just wanted just.
Yes, yes, it's different.
Okay, so with what you're talking about, is that, would that just use the rural, most of the large?
Typically, I see vacant lands of condominium. They can be rural. My, most of my experience with vacant land condominiums is waterfront residential, for example. And I'll use my Soon Arrows Nestor Falls experience. As resorts have changed over the years, from the hunt and fish camp to family resorts. And then what they're, what, what many people have found in the tourism industry is the land is worth more than the business, right? If you have land on Lake of the Woods and they want to retire or they want to sell. Many resorts have been converted to vacant land condominiums. If you've got ten cabins, this is a really good example. If you've got ten cabins, you've already got an approved water system, you've already got approved sewage distribution system. They'll apply for a vacant land condominium. And then what happens is you create a condominium corporation which manages those common elements, the roadways, the water distribution and purification systems and the septic field, if it's a septic field or a lagoon, if it's a lagoon in a resort. And then as a buyer, you buy a unit. So say it was ten cabins, I'll take cabin number one. And then I become a member of that condominium corporation and then communal, and then, and then the corporation, the condominium corporation manages those communal assets. Tenants in common is a, is a different beast. It's not something we would allow within municipal limits, not in Soon Arrows Nestor. They're there, they're kind of grandfathered in. It's not something if they come to us that we would permit now because there are. Tenants in common was created by clever lawyers to get around the Planning Act. So it's not our job to get around the Planning Act. Our job is to conform to the Planning Act. So it's a way you could kind of get around a, a, a subdivision approval or a, or a vacant land condominium approval.
That's what I wanted to know.
That's all you, okay.
Counselor Vendo?
I think that they have been used in some various municipalities also with affordability. Tenants in common where you're looking at purchasing private property residence, they think that's more of a title.
Well, so here's the deal with tenants in common. Depending on how many tenants are in common. It could be from three, because up to two is joint tenants. And then you go, a three and up, you go tenants in common. And I'm not a lawyer, I'm not gonna pretend to know the legal background here. But let's say, for example, again, the resort example I was using, and it's got ten or fifteen cabins. Then what, what you'll see around the region would be some resorts that used to be resorts, but they're now tenants in common now. So what happens is you go on title, it's called an undivided share of title. You go on title with fifteen strangers that you don't know. You now own a piece of property with, because you've decided to buy cabin seven. And you're now, you know, with the other, with the other fourteen people. You, you're now, you're now on titled and a, and a property owner with, you know, thirteen or fourteen other strangers. Some people have a high tolerance for risk and think that's fine. Some people have a low tolerance for risk and say, no, thank you very much. I'd rather have clear title just in my name. Thank you very much. My problem in a municipality with tenants in common, and then we'll maybe move on. What happens when they come to me for a building permit? Because when you take the building permit out, every property owner, if it's joint tenant, husband, wife, one signer, one signature is fine. Soon as you get to joint tenants or tenants in common, then you need approval from everybody who owns the land to put on a deck. If you're in a municipality, if you're in an area without municipal incorporation and there is no system of governments and there are no building permits per se, it's not an issue. But with me, it's an issue. With me and the, the building department, it's an issue. And there are ways to manage that, but it's certainly not a preferred way of doing business, that's for sure. So there are just a couple of the, and there are other, there are some other issues as well that come up. Having said that, I've seen tenants in common situations with property owner associations that work great because everybody gets along. And I've seen others that are unmitigated nightmares for whatever reason. Well, because people don't get along.
Am I talking anymore about plans of subdivision?
Oh, yeah, it, uh, uh, proven authority is delegated to the planning advisory committee. That's important. It's not with council. That is with the planning advisory committee as are plans of condominium, both. So there's a standard plan of condominium, which is your apartment style. And then there's your vacant camp, vacant land condominium, which is more of, it kind of looks and feels more like a subdivision.
Counselor.
Is the planning advisory committee required under the act?
No. What is required is a committee of adjustment. That's for the minor variance slide we talked about earlier. You really do need a committee of adjustment under section, and then often what happens is many municipalities. Because they'll be dealing with minor variances. They've let them do the consents as well. The one, the land divisions with the ones and twos, not the plans of subdivision. And often that's what you'll see municipalities appoint a planning advisory committee to do consents and minor variances. Bigger municipalities with more capacity. And a bigger population often put, you then put a planning advisory committee together. And, and we did this in Soon Arrows Nestor Falls as well. And then they would delegate subdivisions of condominiums as well. But that is at the pleasure of council, okay? It's not required. Oh, there's consents. Creation of small number of lots, three municipal services, four unfunded serviced, that's a flexible number. I've seen ones and twos. I've seen it go up to five and six. We kind of settled on the middle ground here, three and four. Lot line realignment, that's called a lot addition, lot line realignments. Sometimes if you've got two lots next to one another and all of a sudden somebody finds out that the garage that he built fifty years ago has a one meter encroachment on the neighbor's property. And that's never a good thing. Rather than move the garage or take the chainsaw out, often they can come up with an amicable agreement where he'll, you know, if there's enough room, the neighbor will say, okay, I'll sell you a meter or two and we'll put, that's called a lot addition. We're taking some land from one lot and adding it to another. So, and that's all, that's under the same section of the Planning Act, section fifty-three. When planning advisory gives, makes a decision, it's called a provisional decision. Often they'll attach conditions to it. Say for example, it's a consent for a new lot in a, in a rural area with private services. And we haven't gotten a letter from the health unit saying that, yeah, there's an adequate space on this new lot for a septic field. They can put a condition on, yeah, we'll give you provisional approval, provided you get us the health unit approval within, it used to be one year. You had one year to meet all these conditions. And in one of the earlier amendments that went through, you now have two years to meet those conditions for provisional approval on a consent. And there are other conditions that we may, that the planning advisory committee can put on as, as well. Yeah, with consent, typically with plans of subdivision, there's a five percent parkland dedication that you can do either as land or as cash and loot, five percent of the assessed value of the property before the land is divided. You don't have to do that with consents. Some municipalities do, some municipalities don't. And.
Generally, what do we do?
We have not. Plans of subdivision, yes. Condominium even, yes. And they would go into the Parks Reserve. That's what we always used to do. And with consents, we have not. I have to double check to see, thank you very much, where we're at there. And of course, the old, and they can, it can be appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're talking last. You're welcome, you're talking last night.
Okay. Next.
Next again?
Site plan control. Where do I start with site plan control? Site plan control is a useful tool. When used in the right circumstances. So what site plan control does is, um, it kind of takes zoning to the next level, is the best way, like zoning's pretty detailed stuff. This is like zoning for a single lot, where you're saying where, you know, if it's a commercial development, where your light standard's going to be, uh, what kind of trees are you going to plant, where's your entrance going to be off the road, how many parking spaces are there, where's your dump, where's your garage dump, where, where's your garbage dumpster going to go? Uh, there, there are a lot of, it's a, it's, it's, it's a pretty detailed site plan sketch attached to a contract that says, this is exactly how we're going to develop this piece of property. I'm going to speak in general terms here. My view, my view as a planner, is that site plan, it's a very useful tool in certain circumstances. Number one, primarily in the urban area where you have tightly compact, uh, development, and where planning really matters in terms of what that look, how that property is going to look when it's done, then site plan control and a site plan control agreement is, is an appropriate tool. So we get the site plan sketch, it gets attached to a contract, which is called the site plan control agreement, they pay a fee, and then at the end of the day, it actually gets registered on title, and one can even take a security as well. So we're going to hold security, so if you don't build what you said you were going to build in that site plan that you attached to the contract, then we can keep your security, and we can either build it ourselves, or get you to build it. Bob, or Counselor Bernie?
Yeah, give the example of Jeff that, in Canora?
Uh, well, I can give you the example, example of the one I worked on, uh, one of the ones, we, we used, uh, site plan control very sparingly previously. The best one example is the Walmart Canadian Tire development that went in there. Access, Egress, there were some easements there, we wanted to make sure they had enough parking, we did want to see some landscaping along Highway seventeen east, we did want to make sure, uh, that, that, uh, you know, it, it had a, it, 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 it had a, it had a nicer look to it. And, and in dealing with the professional developer there, and with Canadian Tire, they expected site plan, a site plan control agreement, because they're big professional outfits that do most of their building in the south, so that process went very smoothly. There are some site, like, the other one we're involved in right now, of course, is the development on the Howard property with the Canora District Services Board, there's some store owner management issues there. Again, it's a bigger development, it's quite appropriate to have site plan control, uh, for, uh, for a development like that, and some larger residential developments, uh, the casino is another example, that, uh, they're getting some site plans to us, and we're reviewing them, uh, there will, site plan control will be required for that as a bigger development. In a rural area, I don't like to use site plan control in a rural area because the planning issues just aren't that great, with one exception. Often, um, for example, with subdivisions in the rural areas, uh, on the waterfront, uh, often a fish or wildlife assessment or fisheries assessment is required, we've used it on Black Sturgeon Lake previously, if there's wall line nursery and habitat, or even northern nursery and habitat, and it's in front of a lot, and the report, the assessment report says, don't build a dock here, because we want to protect this habitat, we've used site plan control, very simple site plan control agreements that get registered on title, and they're in the property file, so when they come for, to build a dock, and the building department opens the property file, they say, oh, okay, yeah, you can get a dock, but you can't, the site plan agreement says you can't build it here, because that's northern pike spawning and nursery. So we've used it in the rural waterfront areas to protect environmental values, and that's the only time we've really used it in, in rural areas, is mainly, uh, resource protection. And again, in, 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 in urban areas, uh, I think it's a useful tool on a limited basis. Uh, I'll say diplomatically, that since I've started, I, I think the use of site plan control has been more general than surgical, and that's one of the changes we want to make. It's like, not everybody needs a site plan control agreement, unless there's an issue that needs to be addressed, but, um, I think they've been, they've been requested on a more regular basis than is required, so we're going to, we're going to make that, we're going to make that change. Because it adds, you know, it's going to add, by the time you pay the fee, hire a professional to do a good site plan sketch for you, um, and, and you'll pay the registration, internal circulation, you know, you're six thousand dollars in six months for a building permit that really should have been issued anyway. So we want, that's, you talk, you talk about speeding things up in red tape, that's one of the changes we're making.
Is this where you'd make, uh, potentially Septed suggestions? Could you?
Yes, yes. Particularly, if you think about the, remember what I said, site plan control is quite appropriate for the downtown urban area, this is where you could use tho, uh, those principles in site plan control review, yes.
Good, I was thinking, I wasn't sure if this was the appropriate, um, juncture to use to, to make those suggestions.
Yeah, that's exactly the tool you want to use for that. Uh, community improvement plans, section of the Planning Act escapes me at the moment, I think it's forty-two. And again, now this is, municipalities can't bonus. That's a rule in the Municipal Act, you can't give land, you know, well, you can't give land away, you can't give grants, you can't bonus, except. If you have an area you've targeted for redevelopment, and that's called, then you identify what, so in your official plan, what you need to do is state, um, these are the areas within the municipality that we think will be eligible for community improvement plans. And then out of your official plan, then if you want to proceed with a community improvement plan, you do under, I think it's section forty-two of the Planning Act. And that community improvement plan, then it gets put together, which is, which typically it's for an area that is targeted for redevelopment for whatever reason. So let's look at these. The Harbour Town Centre, of course, that was right after we started downtown revitalization, and the purpose there was to provide grants and incentives for the private sector to improve, uh, their private property to match the investment that the municipality made in the public sector for roads and landscaping and trees and all that type of stuff. Same thing with Ottawa Street in Kiwatin, and on Highway seventeen west. And they're very similar in the way they're put together, and, and I think most counselors are familiar with the community improvement plans, and I think we, I won't go into it in great detail, but I think we've seen great success with the community improvement plan and the program since about oh-six to oh-eight, somewhere around there. Same time we did phase one of downtown revitalization. The former mill site's different, that's what we call brownfield development, uh, again, in situations like this, you're targeting a specific area for redevelopment, uh, so it's not so much, uh, building facade, signage, and landscape grants, as it might be tax, you can do tax increment financing as well for, for redevelopment of the property. And what tax increment financing is, uh, it eases the, the, the tax payments on the developer on the front end of a development, and it phases the taxes in over time, a five or ten year period. So that, uh, it e, it, it, it eases the cost of development to a developer, so it's an incentive to redevelop the property. So there's a community improvement plan for the former mill site as well.
We have a question from Counselor Vendo.
Thank you, Roger. So you can't bonus under the Municipal Act, except, you can't.
Pretty well.
Okay.
In a very jem, yes.
And so then, those, with those except, how specific do you have to be with that? Does, does that question make sense, like when you're, like, education?
Yeah, no. Pardon?
Does that make sense? Like, what, why have, you can't bonus except, like?
Well, you can't, we can't speak to the policy preferences of the provincial government.
Right, sorry, so I ask my question, what is, what, how, how specific is that? So you have, we have Harbour Town Centre, Kiwatin, former mill site, these were things that we determined that is municipality areas that we focus on. Wha, what are the requirements that you need in order to focus on certain areas, are there any?
It's... Go ahead, Jeff. It's at the discretion of, well, number one, you're guided by your official plan, first you have to see what, most official plans these days just say, the entire municipality is, can be, uh, a community improvement area. You pick the spots, and that's basically what the Canora official plan says, so we're probably going to leave that the way it is. So it's really up to council, in fact, we have a slide on this coming up later, of, of, you know, what, again, repeats, these are the three community improvement plans now. Here are a couple of candidate areas you may want to think about, um, but at the end of the day, it's up to council. If they, if there's an area they want to target for redevelopment.
Am I hearing that maybe your second or third question would be, could, could we learn more about those opportunities to encourage development?
Yeah, yes.
It, it's certainly something that'll be top of mind in the, in the official plan, and we will have more to, we'll bring back more on that, okay?
Jeff, just a question on social housing, is there some, is there some, is there a gray area?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I had in the back of my mind when I was saying you can't bonus, but yeah, sometimes you can. To me, if it's agency to agency, it's a different ballgame. If you're dealing public agency to public agency, you can't bonus to the private sector?
Right.
And lawyers may challenge me on this, but to me, if you're going government agency to government agency, it's a different ballgame.
Yeah, so just for, um, uh, because you're aware of what I'm talking about, but it just came to mind, but, uh, for the seniors build on Lakeside, um, uh, like, for the market rate of the, uh, of the property was one thing, and what we sold for was another.
That's fine.
Um, and we also are injecting at some point at the tail end of the project into infrastructure, and that's defined as...
Now, that's the other interesting nuance here, is that, getting back to the question of, uh, uh, what's bonusing and what's not, one of the tool, one of the ways that this goes back to, you know, previous councils and, uh, and bonusing, one of the ways we've always been able to be a partner in a project and not contravene the Municipal Act is through infrastructure. Infrastructure upgrades and infrastructure extensions, they don't count as bonusing, that's just us building infrastructure. So certainly, uh, before CIPs were around, and, you know, I mean, if you look at the Trust Toys project way back in the day, they didn't get a nickel out of the city of Canora, but we built a heck of a lot of infrastructure that made that happen. So we didn't bonus, but what we did do was build the infrastructure to make it happen. So that's another tool.
I just, while we're on this topic, because I know the question has come up, um, social housing and KDSP and other builds and tax revenue, are they getting any breaks? And so I wanted you to know that administration has done some more digging on that, so we can't share, uh, individual, property tax information on individual properties, but this is really important, okay? There is no break on property tax, or on water and sewer rates, for a multi-residential build, whether that's a private development, KDSP, another organization, there's no, so there's no discounted ride there, okay? So they pay property tax, just like any private developer would, and they pay full water and sewer rates. And so I have looked at through the finance department, and while I can't get into case by case, building by building numbers with you, I, that is a question that council's brought forward, and so since we're on it, I just want to make sure that that's on the record in the public, and that council has an definitive answer on that. So any future builds, uh, we'll continue to build our property tax base, we'll continue to add to water and sewer rate collection.
Yeah, because that, I guess that's my whole point though, is, you know, and I, I think Counselor Chase uses that, uh, thing of spend money to make money, um, and it doesn't matter what it is when it comes to housing, um, you know, if you get, if, if you invest a quarter of a million dollars and you're getting back dollar X in taxes, and then every month, wa, uh, other utility charges, at some point, your return on investment comes back fairly quickly, uh, and I think there was a misnomer in the campaign about the fact that all these buildings that were going up, uh, like, the, we, someone may have paid taxes on it one time, once they're handed over to that agency, we get nothing, and that is factually incorrect. And that's why I posed the question back a while ago, uh, we need to, we need to get that out, uh, to the community that, uh, it's not free. Thank you.
Okay.
A little bit of tangent, but they...
Uh, building permits. Everything culminates in the building, like that whole train, it all comes down to the building permit at the end of the day, and my philosophy is always, we are in the building permit business. This is what we do, our job is to get the building permits out the door. Making sure everything's building code compliant, but get, to get the building permit out the door. And what, what's the connection here? Well, what happens with a building permit once it's approved, and I'll go through these bullet points, but what happens with a building permit that automatically electronically gets registered with the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, which triggers a reassessment of the property? Typically, if you're building a new building, or making an improvement, or whatever, they'll do it either through their computer generated program, which is very mysterious to me, and I have no idea how it works, and they, and they, and they will increase your assessment accordingly, all, or they will come out and do an inspection of the property to see the new garage, or the new sunroom that was built, or the new house if it was a vacant lot, and they will, um, provide, uh, uh, your assessment will be updated. And of course, it's the assessment upon which you, your tax bill is created, but it's the, it's the growth in the assessment which, um, eases the financial burden of the city, because as your assessment grows, there's, uh, uh, less, uh, pressure on the taxpayer, the remain, all of the other taxpayers, because what you're doing is growing, you're growing municipality and you're creating more assessment. So that's why the building permit's important, important, because once one is issued, it triggers a reassessment of the property. That's the big picture. But, uh, the little picture is, we want to make sure stuff doesn't fall down. So you need to build to a certain standard for health and safety reasons, so necessary to construct, renovate, demolish a building for some changes, and for some changes of use, sometimes a change in use might change a by the code, or a building code, so we have to keep an eye on change of use as well. Uh, the chief building is, chief building official, or CBO, is ultimately responsible. By law, every municipality must have a CBO, you have to have one, and they have to be accredited. We're off the hook for private wells and septic fields. In the south, you're not, but in the north you are, where it is, uh, it's called part eight of the Building Code Act, and that has been delegated to the Northwestern Health Unit, and we're very happy to have them look after that. Permits help ensure new construction is compliant with the Ontario Building Code, which sets out standards for the design and construction of the building. And again, this is all health and safety stuff. Before a building permit can be, uh, can be issued, the CBO has to make sure it is compliant with all applicable law. And typically, uh, if we go full circle back, sometimes it's not in compliance with the zoning bylaw, oops, you need a minor variance before we can issue a building permit. And then once the variance go through, then the building permit can be issued.
Uh, Jeff, I think Counselor Moncrief had a question.
Is there a bottleneck, like what's the time, the timeframe expected? If I'm elected and asked for a permit, what do you expect me to do to get a permit? What's the time lag between?
Typically, it's a couple of weeks. I'm getting it, I can't say that I have a full handle on that as yet, and we will be talking more about that.
Okay. There, there are some requirements, Counselor Moncrief, in the legislation, but then there's a little bit of nuance there too, like, it has to get mailed in, received, processed, and so sort of, when does the clock start and when does it stop? That's sort of where there's a bit of gray, would it be fair to say?
Yeah, and you know, as I said, with housing targets, whatever the legislation says, I think, uh, no, I can almost guarantee you that our, our customer service targets will be more aggressive than whatever is prescribed. Okay. Come on, keep up. Responsibilities of council. Of course, we talked about it earlier, your job is to, when we're, when we finally have the official plan ready sometime in twenty twenty-three, it is council's job to, uh, adopt the up-to-date official plan, so I figure mid, somewhere mid-two thousand and twenty-three, we'll be bringing a document to you for your approval. Council's decision, it says you shall be consistent with the PPS, it's our job is planning, uh, like, that'll be in every planning report, that either goes to council or the planning advisory committee, if you've delegated that to the planning advisory committee, that's what we put in our, in almost every planning report, it has PPS compliance. Uh, sometimes, and sometimes, uh, it's easy and straightforward, uh, other times where, uh, you know, again, the PPS is, is so broad, it's sometimes hard to, to, uh, uh, say it's consistent with this section and this policy. And I'll tell you now, the re, a lot of the reason lately why we've been putting this And I'll tell you now, the re, a lot of the reason lately why we've been putting this in there is that if it ever gets appealed to the OLT, the Ontario Land Tribunal, which I think is the next and last slide almost, that's kind of where, you know, that's, that's where cases can be won and lost. So we, we always try to put a PPS compliance in our planning reports. We, we are by law required to, and there's various timeframes for notice. It varies from plans of subdivision and zoning by law and official plan amendments, which are 20-day notice period. We have to get notices out and of when the statutory meeting's going to be, which for official plan and zoning amendments is here for council. And that's, of course, the, where the public shows up and either supports or opposes an application. But we have to make sure that we're compliant with the planning act, that we get our notices out on time. There's also a provision, well, there's a couple of things here. I'll keep it simple and engaging within Indigenous communities. What the Planning Act says is, all First Nations within one kilometer of the application shall be sent a notice. It's the same notice that everybody else gets. And that's typically what we do. Any engagement beyond that would be local policy on how you do, on how you would like to proceed with that. Generally, the rule of thumb is more engagement is better than less engagement. Apply provincial and local interest. Well, that's our job as we analyze the application. Decision-making on planning applications, getting back to council. Council's responsible for official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments. And again, land division and minor variances and consensus with the Planning Advisory Committee. So this applies to the Planning Advisory Committee too. You've just delegated that decision down to them. This applies to PAC. And then there's defend the decision at the Ontario Land Tribunal. That's a more, that's more nuanced than it's showing up on the slide. There are some instances where you want to defend the decision vigorously. There are some, for examples, where council or PAC may make a decision and approve an application, and a disgruntled neighbor is not happy with that decision and appeals to the OLT. In some of these instances, and I know this for a fact over, over the years, many municipalities just go, okay, well, you guys fight it out, and we'll send our planner. And often, in those cases, if you send a planner, it's called a friend of the board. So for example, I would go to the OLT hearing as a neutral third party, a friend of the board, and I would simply forth the OLT chair, who would be sitting in a location like that, although lately all the meetings have been electronic. And I would simply give a full background on the whole thing, not giving a professional opinion one side or the other, and I step back and let the two parties slug it out. So you don't have to defend every decision. The answer is it depends. To me, if it's a decision where maybe a refusal, where you're vigorously defending your official plan policy, and there's an appeal, you better darn go well defending, because you're defending your own land use policies. But there are others, so it depends on the application.
And so our most recent experience with that is something like, so that went to the OLT, they provided a ruling, and so that's one example we've had.
That's one I don't like talking about.
I think the question around the...
Hit that slide.
The Bill 23, I think there was some stuff around the OLT in that bill that I guess I would like a little bit more there.
On Bill 23?
Oh, yeah, I gotta talk about it.
That's where it was taken.
Would you feel prepared to speak to the OLT implications in Bill 23, or would you need more time to read it?
I need more time on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks for, thanks for your patience, councillor.
My sense is there'll be fewer opportunities for appeal than more. That's, that's right, that's, that's what Bill 23 is all about. Speaking of the OLT, the Ontario Land Tribunal, formerly the Ontario Municipal Board, then the ALPAC, the latest iteration is called the Ontario Land Tribunal, which consolidated expropriation, environmental and land use boards all into one single board. Rules are basically the same, a lot more electronic now for filing, and even, of course, with COVID for, for meetings. Like, all the hearings I've done over the past two, three years have been, have been electronic, where I'm used to sitting in a room like this and giving opinion evidence. So provincially-appointed independent tribunal, that's mostly true. I can argue, fine, I can argue nuances on that. It does tend to fluctuate a little bit from provincial government to provincial government. We talk about 23 and where they want, well, who they're going to point to the OLT. Maybe somebody who's more in line with what we're trying to do. So there is some nuance with the OLT. It does kind of shift and change a little bit over the years. But generally, generally, their decisions are pretty consistent over the years. Here's appeals, makes decision on certain land use matters, appeals may be made by persons qualified in a public body, that's true. Official plan updates may not be appealed. That's an important one. A lot of that southern Ontario driven. You get municipalities working for 10 years, they finally get their official plan approved, and, and it goes through. And then, like, the next day, there's an appeal to an amendment or something like that. And what they've said is, I, I think what it says is, once a new official plan is approved and signed by the minister, there can be no appeals for two years. Unless there's a policy in the official plan that says there can be, which is a strange thing. The most important thing that's not on this slide, and, and I'd be interested to hear other opinions on this. OLT decisions are final and binding. There are only two ways to appeal an OLT decision. One is called administrative, where, and I've been through these, where a decision comes down and the appellant's still not happy, and they want the OLT to, the Ontario Land Tribunal, to do an administrative review, to make sure that they followed every little proper policy and procedure, and didn't make any mistakes along the way. And that's usually not a particularly onerous or, or difficult exercise. And it rarely, and I don't think I've ever heard, an administrative review overturn an OLT decision. The second is, any individual can appeal an Ontario Land Tribunal decision to divisional court. So now you're taking out of the, you're taking it out of the Ontario Land Tribunal, and the only argument you can make there, and I'm not a lawyer, but I've been around long enough to know, the only argument you can make in divisional court is that they acted outside their legal jurisdiction. They acted illegally, right? So they have a set of rules, because there's the Ontario Land Tribunal's Act, and they have to behave in a certain way, and it's called ultra vires. If they operated ultra vires or outside the law, then a divisional court can strike that decision down, because they said, you didn't have the authority to make that arbitrated decision. So that's the only two ways that an OLT decision can be appealed. An administrative appeal, which, or you go to divisional court. Otherwise, and they are both rare, the rule of thumb in the planning world is, when an OLT decision comes down, live with it and move on. Because they're finally binding.
Jeff?
Yes.
Where are we with the transmitter road build? They appeal it, they aren't?
No. I don't believe there's any appeal there. That project is going ahead. Transmitter Road by Sunset Bay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, there's no appeal.
There was an attempt and they didn't have proper grounds.
I was just talking to the KDSB the other day, and that, there's no appeal, that is proceeding. Yep. Which one? I, I get to pick.
You get to pick?
You don't pick.
Councillor Moncrief.
I'm not sure if this is the right time, or if it's not, you can say so, but on the campaign trail, I got three different questions about the, some of the protected areas on, in the Black Sturgeon.
Oh, yeah.
Being dropped in the new plan. So what's going on there? Is this a long time? We didn't talk about it.
I, you know, I've heard the same thing, and I haven't, to be honest, I haven't gotten my head around it with Kevin, our planner.
Can you circle back to me on that?
Oh, I have to circle back in it for me. So there, so that's certainly not a problem. I need to get it straight in my own head. I think, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know. I'm not going to, I'm not going to speculate, but it's a priority for me to get it straight and to explain it to council.
I need to know what they've told me.
Because I've heard, I've heard the same thing.
Brass tax is, in the initial draft, there was a restricted, there's a restricted overlay on the amount of development that could occur on Black Sturgeon. And in the draft that we did with the outside consultant, they were recommending to remove that overlay.
Okay.
Okay? We are gonna, we are looking at that, and we're gonna make a decision if that even stays in the draft that comes to council.
Okay.
Yeah, like we, and that's, that's basically what it was. Right now, there's a limit, remove, no limit.
What do my understanding is, they haven't even reached the limit?
No, there's 15.
So, you know, we, we can't speak to, Jeff and I at this point, we can't speak to why that was initially included by the external consultants, so just that's a high-level overview, and so there, we have heard their concerns. They've come in and done a deputation, and we are taking those concerns seriously in our review process against them. The Black Sturgeon residents.
Okay, any other questions before we move on?
This is, you can drag me to the proper place, but just, so Kevin's the chief building inspector, Kevin Robertson. And how many staff does he have, Jeff? Uh, there are two staff in the building department. Okay, just two. Uh, it's chief building official and a building inspector, who also is the deputy chief building official in Kevin's absence.
And who's that, Jeff?
Jeremy Smith.
And who's the other?
Well, Kevin Robertson is the chief building, just the two.
Gotcha.
Yep. As it exists today.
Is it planned to stop it?
Yeah, well, that's, I think that's an in-cap more, we're sliding in the in-camera portion when we start talking that way, so if we can, maybe, yeah, just...
My, my point, just, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, so as of today at...
Sorry, you can bring that up.
2:21 in the afternoon. We have a staff of two. Are we ready? Speaking, so, a little more detail on Planning Advisory Committee. It is, it is an important committee of the city of Kenora, because council has delegated decision-making to them for subdivisions, condominiums, consents and minor variances. So this is just a quick peek at the Planning Advisory Committee, what its structure is, how it functions and what it does. So Planning Advisory Committee, it's Committee of Adjustment. Again, that's section 45 of the Planning Act. And they make decisions on minor variances. They can be used, and this is in the terms of reference, and we can talk about this one a little more later as well. Council can use them as a sounding board for decisions they need to make on zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments. They may seek a recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee. Some, in some municipalities, they send everything to the Planning Advisory Committee for a recommendation. That's been the recent practice of the city of Kenora. We may wish to take a look at that. Or this, or, or the council can send applications for zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments. Again, they could send them to PAC only when they want some advice from the Planning Advisory Committee in making a decision. So official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments do not have to go to the Planning Advisory Committee. They can go to the Planning Advisory Committee if the council deems it to be something that they would like the Planning Advisory Committee's advice on. So again, in the, as an example, in the past, everything has kind of gone to PAC. It does add some time to the process, because now we've got aligned meetings up. My experience previously, over the last 10 years in Suenaros Nester Falls, we used the other alternative, where we did not send, like, they did their normal business, but we didn't send zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments to the Planning Advisory Committee unless council wanted their advice before making a decision on the matter. So in that case, it was discretionary. We can talk about how this, how this council may want to, what their preference would be in using PAC, whether they want everything to go there for a recommendation, or only those applications or files where they would want some, where they would want some more information or some more advice before making, before council makes a final decision. So that's an important nuance. You don't have to send everything to the Planning Advisory Committee. Now, the other stuff that does have to go there are minor variances, subdivisions, condominiums and consents, because you have delegated decision-making to them, so that has to go there. Official plan and zoning does not have to go there, unless you want it to. There are seven members, including a chair and a vice chair. We provided min support by a secretary and city planner. That's the way it's always been set up. And they do get paid a modest remuneration.
Councillor Mansell.
Do they go through any kind of a training?
Funny you should ask. Yes. Yes, in fact, training starts December 6th. We have a training package together. We have a lot of new bodies on PAC. We have a couple of, well, we have, we have, I think only one returnee. But we do have some members you've appointed who are very experienced and will be helpful actually in also, I think, doing some of the training. But we do have, our staff have put a training package together, and we have a couple of training sessions together before their first meeting on the 15th of December. We have two, we have one minor variance application, which looks pretty straightforward. And then we have two other applications which are linked, they're related. It's a, it's a lot addition and a consent. So they'll, they'll get some training, and then they'll get their first couple of files to work on.
Councillor Chase.
Just to confirm, thank you, your worship, you had said that we delegate that authority to PAC for minor variances and consents and that. That's a requirement under the municipal act?
The only one that's...
Can we delegate?
The only one that's a requirement are minor variances.
Okay, so...
Well, it's even not a hard and fast, typically, you set up, then it's just, then it's this narrowest mandate, which is just a committee of adjustment, and they just do minor variances. You really, that's okay, you really want to do that. The other delegated approval authority is discretionary on council's part.
So in theory, could we delegate that authority to the city planner and not have PAC for minor variances?
That's funny, there...
Someone wants to tell me a plan is black and white.
That wasn't me. Let me tell you that. There's a lot of, so the simple, well, I'm gonna turn your question around a little bit. Council can take back approving authority for subdivisions, condominiums and consents.
Okay.
Which I would never, I would recommend, I would always recommend you have a committee to you with minor variances and consents, right? There, that's kind of the, you know, the smaller, the easier, smaller stuff. Some councils prefer to be the approving authority for subdivisions and condominiums, in addition to the zoning and the official plan they do now. I mean, that's a discretion, that, that, that's at the pleasure of council. To kind of get to your question, and it's, and it's not part of this presentation, there's been a lot of discussion in my professional association about having council delegate some decision-making to planning commissioners or staff rather than the Planning Advisory Committee. That hasn't gotten much traction with the province of Ontario. We lobbied a few years ago, lobby isn't the right word, sent briefing papers up to the province saying, if you want to speed up development, there, there, there's some real simple stuff that you could just delegate to, like we do with site plan control. I talked about site plan control. Stuff like that doesn't come to council. That's an administrative process. And what council has done in the site plan control bylaw is delegate that to staff to approve, so it doesn't hold up the approval process. We do that now. There may be, with some of the legislative changes coming through, I think there will be some limited, limited opportunities for council to, for example, delegate the removal of a holding zone on, you know, we have these holding zones, when everything's ready, it still has to come back to council to take off. I think with the new legislation, that can be delegated to staff. So staff says, yeah, all these conditions are met, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, take the holding zone off. So there's, there, there are some limited opportunities to delegate the staff. And I think the bigger question is, is always, do, do you want the Planning Advisory Committee to continue to have delegated approving authority for subdivisions and condominiums? Because they're usually bigger developments, right? Or do you want that with council? The thinking back in the day, and then I'll wrap this one up. The thinking back in the day was that planning approvals for bigger developments like subdivisions and condominiums should be apolitical, sticking to planning rules only. And they shouldn't be subject to political whims or political analysis. That these are just, these are just planning issues, so let's create a Planning Advisory Committee and resource it with planning staff and... And, uh, and, uh, and then it was, there were no elected officials on the Planning Advisory Committee. Now again, that's a gray area as well. I've seen Planning Advisory Committee membership with one or more counselors on it and it works fine. But it depends, you know, you sit on that, that continuum of how political or apolitical do you want your Planning Advisory Committee to be or, or not?
Counselor?
Yes, your worship, this is probably both for Kyle and Jeff. If the final authority for decision making rests with council, would it be in the National District Council to also take the training that the Planning Advisory Committee is getting?
Uh, the short answer would be yes.
When? We have no details.
Pardon?
I don't have any details.
No, what I'm saying, you know, if, 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 I thought what you asked is that if we take back approval authority for subdivisions and condominiums, do we need training? The answer is yes, you should. But that's not the case at the moment.
There is also sort of some planning 101 training for municipal officials. Could we maybe take a look into that? They seem to come up fairly regularly. They're virtual right now. Could we maybe come back to you on the next council meeting? I, I think any basic planning training, it's a big part of what we do in this room. So I think any basic training would be valuable for, especially for the infill state. Is that fair? So just put a plug in that and see what we can line up.
Quick facts, I guess we're doing quick facts now. So this has been going on, what seems like forever. Regular meetings currently held on the third Tuesday of every month. Of course Zoom recently, um, 6:00 PM, I guess is the appointed time right now. We'll be looking at that at the first meeting of PAC to see if that's the way the previous PAC did it, whether, just as between the CAO and yourselves, you had to set your meeting dates, we'll be going through the same exercise with the new Planning Advisory Committee to see if, uh, if they want to go with the six o'clock or a different time. Agenda and staff report with recommendations provided Thursday of the week. That's so the committee members have time to, just as with council reports, they have time to digest the information, get ready for the meeting. Three members constitute a quorum. Just with, same as with council meetings, they have to declare pecuniary interest and they are asked to request it, to declare pecuniary interest. How they do it, you've been through the training, you know how that works. And of course, meeting minutes are publicly available. That's typically after they've been adopted at the next meeting because they're only draft minutes until they're approved at the next meeting and then they're, in fact, I'll make a quick note of this. All planning files, when someone submits an application, pays their fee, we put the date stamp on it, we open a file, that's public information. I've seen too many municipalities say, no, we can't give you that. Yes, we can give you that. Everything in that file with one notable exception is public information. The one notable exception is if it's, if, if I or one of my planning staff look at something and say, I need a legal opinion on this. It's kind of fuzzy. I'm not sure how to interpret this, so I'm going to get a legal opinion. If there's a legal opinion in the file, uh, it is subject to client solicitor privilege. So if anybody wants to file an FOI request on a planning file, they get everything in the file. Every phone call note, every this, I mean, you know, and I've been trained that way for 30 years, like, so I'm used to it. None of this bothers me at all. You know, you should be professional when you're on the phone and talking to people. So that's just a quick note for your information. Planning files are open to the public. And if anybody wants information, uh, out of a planning, uh, file, they are absolutely entitled to it, except if it's a legal opinion. So just, um, authority and purpose. We make decisions on application, um, variance for the zoning bylaw. Well, that's for, uh, minor variances. And then the other thing again, so there's the, there's the Committee of Adjustment that makes, uh, decisions on minor variances to, to tweak the zoning bylaw. And they are the land division committee for dividing land or creating standard or vacant land condominiums. Uh, I don't even, go back to the validation.
So the validation?
What do I want to say about validation orders? Validation orders, they're kind of like a consent. It's where, it's, it's where we fix mistakes. I'm not going to make it more complicated than it needs to be. Often, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, a lawyer made a mistake on a property transfer and it turned out that, uh, they thought the new owner owned the land, but actually technically there was a Planning Act violation and the new owner doesn't own the land, has never owned the land for the last 20 years. Now he's trying to sell the land and it turns out he doesn't own the land and it's a mess. So they have this little special tool called a certificate of validation that is like a Band-Aid. It's like a special little planning Band-Aid. And they have to, they have to make an application to us. They have to convince us and show us where the mistake was made and that this lot that is in question, they're usually holding up a sale, which is probably why Counselor Chase That it's legit, that it was okay back in the day and there was nothing stupid or crazy or illegal done. And I'm oversimplifying this. But then what we do is we could issue what is called a certificate of validation. They come in, they do the presentation, I write a planning report and I go, yeah, this, this looks fine. Let's make, let's let this poor guy own his lot that he thought he owned for 30 years so we can sell it. And so we issue, so that's, that's what is called a certificate of validation. What we're doing is validating the title of the property with the present order. Am I on the next one?
No, you took your most back.
Yeah, I did.
Why, why can't you do that by yourself?
We don't, we don't know what we're doing here.
I know what I mean.
We're in open chat.
Yeah. That was for the public's entertainment. Okay, in addition, uh, the Planning Advisory Committee considers, well, here it is, considers recommendation to council on application to amend the zoning bylaw and official plan. We talked about that earlier. The Planning Advisory Committee has done that on a regular basis in the past. And it's something council may want to consider either keeping that way or making changes to. Here's something we haven't talked about yet. Access the Property Standards Committee per the requirements of the Ontario Building Code. And here's appeals pursuant to the city of Kenora Property Standards Bylaw. These are for buildings, structures that are unsafe, uh, represent a threat to public safety or are, let's say, um, um, not exactly well maintained and well kept and therefore a cleanup is required on the property because we've received all these complaints from the neighbors. So we issue an order. Now the order, which is issued to the owner of the property to, to, to either, uh, bring the building to a safe condition or clean up the property, can be appealed. And if they want to appeal that order, they have to, in fact, we have an appeal coming up in Tupperware on an order that we put on a piece of property. And, um, the Planning Advisory Committee is, hears those appeals and then they make a decision on whether to, uh, side with the appellant, maybe give them more time or say that's unreasonable or to say, no, no, you have to comply. So the, the Planning Advisory Committee is the appeal body for that.
Is that a natural break? We got a little, four more slides.
I could, I, I probably, what do we got? I got four to go. And I'll, I'll make it quick and then we can...
We're going to take a little break after we wrap.
Because these are not, these are pretty straightforward. Only a membership? Uh, membership is, membership is at the pleasure of council. We have seven members. Uh, it's nice if they have experience in planning. They have to be able to do site visits. It's very important that they attend the meetings often. In fact, I'd have to check the terms of reference again. Often there's a provision in the terms of reference, if you do not give regrets and you miss three meetings in a row, you're off. And, you know, we'll be reminding of that, them of that at their orientation meeting. And yeah, we're always looking for a diversity of experience, uh, on the Planning Advisory Committee. So here is just planning applications for a sample year, January to November 2021. Minor variances 16, consents 14. That's about right. Subdivision, usually we're looking at one or two a year. Condominium, it's zero here. Subdivisions and probably condominiums about the same, usually one or two. Zoning amendment, average of 10 sounds about right. Official plan at one, that sounds about right too. That's a typical, it's kind of a typical year on average. Reference, it's the same material I, so Planning, PPS, official plan, zoning bylaw and the PAC Terms of Reference, that's the rules under which they operate. And the Secretary Treasurer and City Planner is a member of, uh, OACA and they represent the consent granting authorities of Ontario. They also provide training annually to PAC members. And often we'll send one, maybe two members down to, and sometimes a staff person down for training. Counselor, agree?
The Secretary Treasurer is one of the PAC members?
No, Secretary Treasurer is always staff.
So there's two people on staff?
Right now, there's, yeah, Secretary Treasurer, right now it's the Secretary Treasurer and City Planner. The interesting is the Secretary Treasurer also, when you create a new lot, uh, or even a plan of subdivision, uh, before it's registered at the land titles office, if it's a consent, you have a stamp, they send you these transfer documents, you have to stamp them and they have to, that's the authority of the city that says, yeah, they've met all the conditions of approval. With a plan of subdivision, there's actually a block, a title block where typically that would be me in this case, uh, would, would sign as the director of planning. And, uh, you know, these are, these are just kind of technical aspects of how the decisions of the Planning Advisory Committee actually turn into reality. We have to actually physically sign off on this stuff and the Secretary Treasurer plays that role. And I think we have one more, which is, uh, of course, and all of this is conducted in public. It's all completely transparent. We have notices for all the planning applications. We, by law, have to circulate to all property owners for consents in, well, 10 days for a variance, 14 for a consent, 20 for a plan of subdivision condominium. There are the ads you see in the paper, often, more often than not, a municipal memo, you'll see the nice fancy GIS maps, uh, for any one of those planning applications. We can also, we have, we have, under regulation, you can also put a, a notice on the property that gets hammered up there. So if the residents drive by, you see that in a lot of municipalities in Ontario. If you drive around, you'll see, especially in Toronto, if you walk around Toronto, they'll be placed into the building, subject to zoning change. So you put a notice on the building. So yeah, circulation of notice to abiding landowners, put a notice on the property or add in a newspaper with a regular circulation in the community. Meetings are held in public, renders a decision on approval or recommend in front of the public. So it's all done in open council. I can't think where we've ever had a closed meeting. It's not, we don't deal with pecuniary matters or property matters or legal stuff. Maybe, maybe for a legal matter, they might go in camera, but I can't recall us ever having to go in camera with the Planning Advisory Committee because they don't deal with the stuff that council deals with. And I think, I think that's it for PAC.
Any questions on this topic before we break?
Meeting halls up, the training room up in the operations center is where the meetings have been held. Thanks, Jeff.
I know you're back on, are you, are you back on again or?
Yeah, so that is a planning stand poetry with Jeff Port. He'll be here on the second and third Wednesday of every month and he's available for your Christmas party. We're going to come back with a little more spicy, uh, we're going to talk about land disposition, we're going to talk about CIP, we're going to talk about map tax. So we'll give everybody a chance just to get refreshed.
I'll try to tone down my comedy routine. So what do we got? Yeah, we got two more.
We're going to have an hour, Jeff. You think we can, we're going to have an hour and a good brief, right?
Uh, we got CIP. Some of this is just going to be a rehash because we talked about, so I'll try, it may go a little faster, but CIP, we're going to talk...